Good morning. This meeting of the Baltimore City Council Health, Environment and Technology Committee is now called to order. I am Councilwoman Danielle McCray, representing the 2nd District and Chair of the Committee. In attendance today, we have Councilman Mark Conway of the 4th District. We have Councilman Ryan Dorsey of the 3rd District, Councilwoman Felicia Porter, 10th District, and Councilman James Torrance of the 7th District. From the Mayor's Office, we have Nina Themelis and Sophia Gabbren-Watt representing today. Also, we have in attendance Matthew Peters, staff to the Committee. Before we get started, just need everyone to please take a moment to turn off or silence your cell phones. Also, for members of the public, if you would like to testify, there's a sign-in sheet in the back of the room. Please sign in and check the appropriate box to indicate that you wish to testify. Today, the Committee is hearing Resolution 21-0003R informational hearing, Baltimore's COVID-19 vaccination plan, for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore City Health Department, Baltimore's healthcare community, and other interested parties before the Baltimore City Council to discuss Baltimore's COVID-19 vaccination plan. The Committee held a hearing and several follow-up work sessions on the resolution over the last year. Today, we will hear an update from our Health Department on current COVID-19 data and our progress vaccinating Baltimore City residents. After that, Committee members will have the opportunity to ask questions, and then we're going to move on to public testimony. As we continue to face the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic, it is important that we persist in discussions to develop ongoing strategies that will ensure the health and safety of Baltimore City's residents in the times to come. Having 82% of the city's population over 12 years old who have received the first or single dose, the city has made tremendous strides in its vaccination efforts in aim to keep Baltimoreans protected and safe, maintain the decline in hospitalizations and fatalities, and retain the opportunity as a public to gather in person as we are today. We must have a shared understanding of our recent progress, current challenges, and potential obstacles. And this hearing is going to provide an opportunity to gain an understanding. And at this time, we're going to hear from our Commissioner of Health, Dr. Girasa.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Girasa, as Chair McCray mentioned, and I am the Commissioner of Health for Baltimore City. I want to thank you, Chair McCray, and Committee for this opportunity to review updates on the city's COVID-19 response, including our progress towards vaccination. Before I get started, I do just want to take a moment and acknowledge that this is actually National Public Health Week. I would be remiss not to thank everyone at the Health Department and everyone working and partnering alongside the Health Department to protect and vaccinate the residents here in Baltimore City. The theme of this year's National Public Health Week is actually "Public Health Is Where You Are." And I think that recognizing where we are, both the opportunities and the challenges, has been very critical in our service to city residents. So as a reminder, the data being presented is up to date as of April 5th. Very quickly going through our agenda today, I will be discussing general COVID-19 data updates. I'll also be reviewing our newly-launched updated dashboard. I will spend some time talking about the CDC's new community-level indicators. I'll discuss BA2 and the implications of BA2. I'll go through COVID vaccination and testing updates. I'll also talk briefly about wastewater testing here in the city. I'll review our contact investigation and contact tracing and plans for a shift in this work in the future, and close out with updates on Baltimore's Triage, Respite, and Isolation Center at the Lord Baltimore Hotel. So beginning with our data updates, this graph represents new cases over time by report date and is also called an Epi-curve. To date, there have been over 111,000 cases here in Baltimore City. Negative numbers and the spike towards the end after the Omicron surge are due to data corrections by the Maryland Department of Health, which is the source of our case data. Presently, daily counts of new cases are slightly increasing. We saw our highest peak of cases during the Omicron surge on January 9th of 1,919 new cases per a seven-day period. We are currently averaging 43 cases per day over a seven-day period. Looking at hospitalizations over time, we also saw our peak in hospitalizations during the Omicron surge with 953 hospitalizations attributable to COVID-19 during the December surge in all of our Baltimore City hospitals. We do consider hospitalizations to be a lagging indicator, and we're presently having low hospitalizations. So there are about 44 patients admitted to Baltimore City hospitals on both our acute and combined care beds that are attributable to COVID-19. This graph represents total COVID-related deaths over time, and as you can see, to date, we've had 1,729 unfortunate losses. The negative numbers and the spike in May represent data corrections again by the Maryland Department of Health. We did see that deaths increased during the Omicron surge but have notably slowed since then. The triangle appearance on the graph in December 2021 and January 2022 represent the missing data from the Maryland Department of Health cybersecurity incident. Moving on to our updated COVID-19 data dashboard, this here is a screenshot of what you see on that initial splash page and can be found at coronavirus.baltimorecity.gov. We have added now additional information on the CDC COVID-19 community-level indicators, and we are also including hospitalizations and vaccination percentages on this splash page. As you can see, deaths remain low at this time. As I mentioned, there has been a slight increase in new cases of about 18% in the past four weeks, but still averaging about 43 new cases per day. As Chair McCray mentioned, 82% of residents in Baltimore City over the age of 12 have received a first or single dose of vaccine. With the relaunch of the dashboard, we are now highlighting Baltimore's COVID community-level indicators, which looks at new COVID cases per 100,000 people, percentage of staffed hospital inpatient beds occupied by COVID-19 patients, and new COVID-19-related hospital admissions per 100,000 people in the past seven days. We are currently categorized as low, and in a future slide, I'll spend a bit more time talking through the methodology around this shift to community-level indicators. As I mentioned, this updated dashboard also now pulls in hospitalizations. We've seen a stark decline in hospitalizations over this past four weeks and are averaging under 50 COVID-19-related hospitalizations per day in Baltimore City. We also updated our testing dashboard page to indicate utilization of open data sources. This information is updated every weekday. We did see significant increases in testing during the Omicron surge with an accompanying increase in positivity, and testing levels since that time have dropped significantly but are still well above 4,200 tests being performed daily here in Baltimore City. So now reviewing our COVID community-level indicators. The CDC released information on COVID community-level indicators just last month, and this represents a new way of evaluating the risk level within a given community to guide decisioning around preventative measures for you and your family. It is a shift away from what we previously looked at, what was known as community transmission levels, which focused on case rates per 100,000 people and positivity. Community-level indicators evaluate hospital beds being utilized by COVID-19 patients, COVID-19-related hospital admissions, and the total number of new COVID-19 cases in the area. They're intended to provide guidelines based on a community risk level of low, medium, or high. This graphic depicts recommended personal preventative measures based on whether your community is experiencing low, medium, or high community level. In low levels, it's advised that residents are up to date on vaccination and that they get tested of experiencing symptoms, followed by appropriate isolation or quarantining. At a medium level, depending on your personal risk, specifically those that are at high risk for severe illness, individuals are recommended to wear a mask and to take other precautions. Everyone should be up to date on their COVID-19 vaccines, including boosters, and get tested of experiencing symptoms. In the last column, if an area is experiencing high community levels, mask-wearing indoors and public spaces is advised, and individuals at higher risk again may need to take additional precautions. Those with symptoms should get tested, and everyone should be up to date on their vaccinations. As noted, Baltimore is currently considered low, and this information will be updated regularly on our splash page, coronavirus.baltimorecity.gov. So moving on to BA2, it is important to note that BA2 is currently the dominant variant in the United States, representing about 72% of total samples being evaluated. It is a variant of concern and has also been called the Stealth variant. It's a sub-variant of Omicron or BA1, and it has some genetic changes in the SARS-CoV-2 spike protein that make it slightly different from BA1. Currently, BA2 is outcompeting or spreading faster than BA1. And as you can see from the bar graph, over the past two months, from February 12th through April 2nd, BA2 percentage, as depicted by the pink bar, has grown exponentially with the corresponding decrease in BA1, as depicted by the darker purple bars. What we know is that BA2 is more contagious than BA1 but does not necessarily cause more severe disease. Prior infection with BA1 is believed to confer strong protection against infection with BA2. Vaccines remain highly effective against the BA2 sub-variant, and I continue to strongly recommend that all eligible individuals 5 and up get vaccinated, and those 12 and up get appropriate boosters. We have learned a great deal from the prior Omicron surge caused by BA1, specifically that public health mitigation measures still work. This includes being up to date on your vaccination, testing when symptomatic, appropriately isolating and quarantining, masking indoors if high-risk, or if your community is experiencing high community levels. Now to discuss COVID-19 vaccination updates specific to Baltimore City. Vaccination remains a pivotal component of our ongoing COVID-19 response, and we continue to perform multiple weekly vaccination clinics alongside our partners. All BCHD clinics are providing third and fourth boosters as recommended by the CDC. For further clarity, the booster recommendations are as follows, and this is also a recent update. Everyone 50 and up is eligible for a fourth dose four months after their last dose. Mixing of doses is also recommended, so if you completed the Pfizer series, it's recommended that your fourth dose be Moderna and vice versa. Children ages 5 to 11 who are severely immunocompromised or moderately immunocompromised should receive the primary series, three-shot series, of Pfizer. A booster is not yet recommended for this age group. People 12 and up who are moderately or severely immunocompromised should also receive a total of four doses of the mRNA COVID-19 vaccine to remain up to date. The four doses include the primary series of three doses of Pfizer or Moderna plus one booster. As a reminder, only Pfizer is available for our 12- to 17-year-olds. And lastly, individuals 18 and up who are moderately or severely immunocompromised and receive the one-dose Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine should get a second dose of either mRNA vaccine Pfizer or Moderna plus an mRNA vaccine booster to stay up to date. I know that this is a lot of information, but it can also be found on our website at With regards to vaccination status here in the city, we set a goal in January 2021 to vaccinate 80% of the city's population by February 2022. We created subsequent benchmarks to reach that goal. With the more recent approval of vaccinations for the 5- to 11-year-old population in November, we've created a separate timeframe to reach the goal of 80% vaccinated with similar benchmarks for this group. Based on CDC vaccination data, the city reached that overall goal by February 28th of 2022, and as of March 31st, 82% of residents 12 and up have had a first or single dose, while 33.5% of our 5- to 11-year-old residents have received a first dose. This map depicts vaccination coverage at the CSA level through November 30th, 2021, with the darkest green representing the highest vaccination coverage, and again, the darkest purple representing the lowest coverage areas for all age groups. The blue symbols represent our weekly Health Department-supported vaccination clinics, where the red and white graphic represents weekly clinics where vaccine is offered to children 5 and up. There has been at least one value community clinic in 54 of Baltimore's 55 CSAs. To date, there have been over 1,800 BCHD-supported and involved COVID-19 vaccination clinics, and over 55,000 doses have been provided in these clinics. These numbers are not inclusive of the vaccines given at our MassVax pods or at the 1,200 East Fayette Clinic. Unfortunately, due to the data breach at MDH back in December, we're not yet able to publicly display updated CSA maps. However, we're actively working with MDH and CRISP to validate and analyze the data we're receiving for the purposes of relaunching this CSA map. While the city has met its overall goal of vaccinating 80% of residents 12 and up against COVID-19 with that first or single dose, we know that disparities continue to persist for vaccination coverage among certain groups, specifically younger people, our Gen Z'ers and our Millennials, and African-Americans. As such, over a year ago, BCHD has hired more than 112 peer ambassadors from our 10 value communities. Those were communities that we knew would be more significantly impacted or experience more disparities when it comes to vaccination. These value ambassadors have been pivotal in supporting our most vulnerable communities to get vaccinated, they continue canvassing events, and they provide that more targeted door-to-door outreach to encourage vaccination and answer questions that residents have. Our ambassadors use the vaccination data that we receive to mobilize in neighborhoods with low vaccination coverage. To date, more than 127,000 residents have been reached by a value ambassador, and there have been over 380 ambassador events, working in 37 of the 55 CSAs in the city. Quickly touching upon our pediatric vaccination strategy, as I mentioned earlier, we've set a goal of 80% of 5- to 11-year-olds being vaccinated by September 30th of this year. Our focus is on reducing vaccine hesitancy by creating demand for vaccine through trusted community sites and community partners. We utilize and leverage existing networks to train city schools, childcare providers, and parents on the importance of the COVID-19 vaccine. We are also supporting existing youth advisory council, parents, physicians, and teachers to spread the message on the importance of the vaccination. And we hold community-based vaccination clinics in low-vax coverage areas via the duty centers and schools. So now shifting to talk a bit about testing. We know that testing and testing access also remains a priority for the Health Department, specifically with the focus on those that have less access to testing resources. So while rapid tests are more available, we recognize that there continue to be disparities in testing access across the city. We're proud to say that we've been doing community testing since March of 2020 with the initial launch of Pimlico and subsequent launches of mobile testing sites. This work is made possible in partnership with many other entities, and we have multiple testing sites still embedded throughout the community. From April 2020 to March 2022, BCHD conducted community testing sites at 48 locations with over 500 individual community testing events, providing over 31,000 tests. Our percent positivity at events has a range from anywhere from 1% to 28%. When we saw the winter surge around Omicron, we were able to rapidly expand our testing capacity at our existing testing locations, seeing sometimes more than 500 people a day. This map is a representation of the varied testing locations throughout the city since April 2020. This graph represents the total number of individuals tested at our community testing sites. While the blue line represents the number of positives that particular month, we saw our highest total number of tests and positives for the month of December 2021, which aligns with the most recent Omicron surge. While I just highlighted our testing work, I wanted to take a moment and also thank community testing partners who helped to make this possible. We've partnered with OEM, the Maryland Department of Health, FEMA, CDC, academic medical institutions and hospitals, and the State Center throughout these past two years to provide community testing. I also wanted to shout out AccuReference Testing, who established a testing site at the height of the Omicron surge and performed over 13,000 tests in eight weeks during that surge. Given the importance of testing, we will continue testing, especially in communities with low access, into the fall. We will likely see lower volumes as we did last summer, but we know that there will be continued need, especially given the lack of access in certain areas. We test five days a week and post our weekly testing schedule at coronavirus.baltimorecity.gov. In the fall, we also launched a rapid test kit distribution program in partnership with CBOs as well as the library, as well as syringe exchange services and the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. We initially received kits from the Maryland Department of Health, and then we went on to purchase our own for further distribution. Given the initial lack of supply at the height of the Omicron surge, we did very widespread distribution to over 350 CBOs. So in the very beginning, pretty much every CBO that applied got some number of test kits, though it might have been a low number. Our focus for distribution was on areas with higher risk of severe disease outcome or outbreak potential, or low vax rate coverage areas, or low access to testing resources. We continue to distribute through many of those partners, the libraries included, community-based organizations, Civic Works is supporting our homebound rapid test kit delivery, Syringe Exchange Services, the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, and Behavioral Health System Baltimore. As I mentioned, we started distributing these kits back in November, and over 187,000 test kits have been distributed through March 25th. Over 60,000 kits went to libraries, 100,000 kits were given to city schools, over 22,000 kits were given to CBOs, and almost 1,000 test kits have been distributed by Civic Works to homebound residents. I just want to take a moment and also thank our partners at the library for their support. What started off as one or two-time community events have now shifted to kits being available during their regular operating hours. For those interested in understanding that availability, you can visit the local library, pratlibrary.org, and look for their at-home COVID-19 test program. In our first round of test distribution, as I mentioned, we were distributing much more broadly. We were able to provide 60 kits to about 350 CBOs. In this next round of CBO selection, we released an RFP and focused on organizations that serve our value communities and prioritize specific geographic distribution. We selected 40 CBOs that will get 1,000 test kits and have the option to redistribute up to 50% to other partners. We anticipate announcing those CBOs next week. Now on to discussing wastewater testing. So as a little background, research has shown that people shed the virus in their urine and feces before normal symptoms are present and can even be shed by individuals who are asymptomatic. The Maryland Department of the Environment reached out last year with an interest in wastewater testing at specific sites throughout the city. They worked specifically with the Housing Authority of Baltimore City to begin this work and have been testing at 12 HABC sites since January 2021. The goal of this project is to detect and respond to the presence of COVID-19 virus in identified vulnerable communities. By testing wastewater, Maryland can help keep communities healthier and safer by making them aware of their risk earlier. If an elevated wastewater level is identified, HABC notifies the residents, and the Health Department conducts testing events or distributes testing information. This work will be ending in May of 2022. This is a zoomed-in view of our wastewater sampling sites coordinated by the Maryland Department of the Environment with the Housing Authority in Baltimore City. These maps are updated weekly. They're color-coded to indicate if the virus is present, and if it is increasing, decreasing, or staying the same. A red dot indicates the virus has been detected and its presence is increasing with each week's sample. A yellow dot indicates the virus has been detected, but the level is steady over the last week. A green dot means the virus is decreasing from week to week. A blue dot indicates the virus was not present or was at an undetectable level. During the week of March 25th, all sites are indicating either no COVID-19 virus present, decreasing trends, or level trends. So now to talk a bit about contact investigation and contact tracing. As many may know, the CDC guidance no longer recommends universal contact investigation or contact tracing. The change in recommendations were influenced by many factors such as the high level of infection or vaccine-induced immunity amongst residents, the availability of safe and effective vaccines, and other proven tools to prevent transmission and mitigate illness, generally decreased participation of people with COVID-19 and their close contacts in case investigation and contact tracing activities, the increased use of self-tests at home, which allow people with COVID-19 to quickly notify their own contacts, and as a reminder, those results aren't necessarily always reported to the local Health Department. Additionally, we've seen emergence of new variants with shorter incubation periods and rapid transmission. We've had a significant number of asymptomatic or mild cases of COVID-19, and there is a high volume of reported cases, is what we saw with the Omicron surge. As such, we continue to contact trace. However, we're focusing on prioritizing individuals living or working in specific settings and groups that are at increased risk, for instance, a congregate setting, such as a shelter. Those would be the groups that we would particularly focus contact tracing on and assist with outbreak control. We focus our investigations on COVID-19 cases and close contacts with onsets or exposures in the previous five days for those settings and those groups that have been identified as high-risk. We prioritize individuals with high risk for severe health outcomes as well, such as those with underlying health conditions, pregnant people, and older adults for whom testing and treatment may be indicated. We also support public education to encourage people with COVID-19 to follow the isolation guidance and inform their close contacts about potential exposure so those contacts can quarantine, get tested, wear a well-fitting mask, and take appropriate precautions. Our team continues to adapt as the pandemic continues to evolve. So for instance, as we saw increased cases with the surge, the team modified their workflow to optimize outreach efforts, again, focused on those high-risk populations. They focused on reaching those groups, identifying and referring those residents that might be unstably housed and struggle to safely isolate or quarantine, identifying cases where transmission risk is high, such as in congregate settings, and making connections for people with community-based organizations that could provide ongoing resources and support. In addition to prioritize investigation, our contact investigation and contact tracing team also support other critical COVID-19 response activities, including incorporating the self-completed surveys that we created and send to clients via text message around contact investigation and contact tracing, increasing assistance in COVID-19 outbreak investigations, expanding our public education and outreach through participation and community canvassing efforts, implementing test-to-treat referral mechanisms to refer clients for antivirals and other treatments, promoting proven strategies to prevent or reduce transmission of COVID-19 in the community, and additional coordination with the COVID-19 Call Center 211 and MAP to refer individuals to much-needed resources and support. Participation in these projects is regularly reevaluated to make sure that we can divert folks as needed depending on what the needs of the response are. This represents a quick snapshot of our contact tracing data from January and February of this year. In January, as a result of the surge, we saw significant increases in cases overall. Our team was able to call about 60% of those diagnosed within the first 24 hours of a positive result, about 58% were reached, with 77% of their contacts being reached. In February, as cases decreased, our team was able to call about 96% of cases in the first 24 hours, with 70% being reached and 80% of their contacts being reached. This is a very quick overview of our call center stats for 2021. Over 66,000 cases were entered into COVID Link, which is the database created and used by the state to enter in case information. Over 58,000 exposures were entered. We received 7,000 calls in our call center related to the COVID vaccine and performed 2,400 pre-registrations to get the vaccine, and our call center personally delivered over 13,000 test results. Our contact tracing team also makes referrals to community-based organizations, including Healthcare Access Maryland and the MAP program. Our team has received multiple calls for general assistance and referred folks appropriately with over 13,000 referrals being made to Healthcare Access Maryland and over 2,400 referrals being made to the MAP program. So as I mentioned, as the ongoing response and needs change this year, our workflows will adjust, and we have some key things happening with that staff. Specifically, many will be transitioned into GSS positions here in the city. We'll move out of the emergency response incident command structure into a more programmatic structure. We will streamline staffing to meet the evolving needs of the response and de-escalate staff in a stepwise approach as appropriate. For those staff that will not be needed to continue support, they will be considered for other positions within the Health Department, and additional staff will be hired and flexed or reassigned to assist in the event of a surge. Staff will also receive additional training in ICS, disease control practices, and outbreak response to maintain our readiness to respond to future surges and other disease threats. I'd like to close this presentation with a brief review of the work done at our Triage, Respite, and Isolation Center. So the Tri-Center provides a safe place for residents who are positive or have been exposed and are not able to safely isolate and quarantine. These services have been operating out of the Lord Baltimore Hotel since May of 2020, with integrated shelter care beginning in September 2021. This work is done in partnership with the Mayor's Office, the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, the University of Maryland Medical System, and Lord Baltimore. To date, about 350 people have been employed over these past two years. We've also run multiple vaccination clinics for both residents and staff at this location. Since opening in May of 2020, we have served 3,300 people. Our average daily intake is about five people a day. The average daily census is about 38 people a day. About 25% of residents are referred from a hospital or emergency department. Almost 30% are referred from recovery houses or substance use programs, and about 20% are coming from shelter or healthcare for the homeless. About 50% of residents have received COVID-19 vaccination. About 50% of all those served are in a congregate setting, while almost 20% are unstably housed. This graph represents our daily census at the Lord Baltimore Hotel since it opened. We saw a peak census of almost 120 people during the Omicron surge, with the census decreasing in recent weeks as cases have decreased. We also began integrated shelter care with a focus on high-risk residents with underlying comorbidities in September 2021. Our goal was to transition them from congregate settings to more individual settings to reduce their risk of contracting disease. We have served 171 residents with this service to date. 57 of them have been transitioned to housing with a little under 60 awaiting housing. And during our COVID vaccination clinics at Lord Baltimore, as I mentioned, we provided 1,600 doses of vaccine. In closing, I did want to highlight some of the positive feedback we received from residents that we served at the Lord Baltimore Hotel. They were lifesavers when it came to us. It is wonderful what you people do here. This is the first place that has helped me in 20 years. I feel really safe here and the food is good. The nurses helped me get all my meds, and the case managers helped me get my birth certificate, voter's card, and Maryland ID. I do just want to shout out the entire Lord Baltimore team, Annalee Shymenek of Lord Baltimore, Elise Gillespie in the Mayor's Office, Dr. Amanda Rosecrans and Bobby Harris of the Health Department, Dr. Chuck Callahan of UMS, John Burns and Molly Rice of UMS, and the entire residential support staff. They have truly been servants to the residents of Baltimore City. I wanted to end with these highlights because as important as it is that we hit our overall population health goals, it's also critical that we never lose sight of the goals we have for meeting individual residents where they are with what they need to be empowered, feel safe, to thrive, and to be healthy. So again, I want to just thank everyone at the Baltimore City Health Department for what they do day in and day out to support our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jaraza, and thank you to your entire team. We're going to move into questions from our committee members. I'm going to start with one question before I get to our other committee members who have questions, and that's just, we're going to go to the pediatric vaccination strategy portion. And I know that we have benchmarks and the overall goal is to have 80% of our children 5 to 11 vaccinated by September 30th of 2022. What percentage are we at right now?
33.5% of our 5 to 11-year-olds have received a first dose.
Thank you, Dr. Jaraza. That's my question. We're going to be moving to Councilwoman Porter, and actually, Councilwoman Porter, prior to your question, I do want to just make sure that everyone is aware that Councilwoman Isaac Gitsi-Schleifer has joined the committee today. And at this time, Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Dr. Jaraza, for your comprehensive presentation. I had a question about the connection of CBOs to small businesses. As we know, more and more people are returning to work, and so as we know the pandemic is still going on, self-testing is not as stringent as it could be, you know, self-test is not as stringent as it could be. Could you share how the Health Department is working with small businesses and other agencies that kind of manage or kind of house small businesses, particularly the Baltimore City Chamber of Commerce, BDC, you know, those types of quasi-agencies? Can you share how the Health Department is working with them to kind of, one, increase testing, but also ensure that testing is being occurring so that people can safely go back to work?
Sure, I think that's a good question. So I'll start. I do have our testing, our clinical testing lead, Dr. Greenbaum, in the event that she would like to add anything. I will say, at least with our rapid test kit distribution program, the focus has been on community-based organization. Again, with limited resources and supply, we've really kind of honed in on communities that we believe to be the most vulnerable or high-risk or have the least amount of access to testing. We now know that rapid test kits are much more widely available than they were, say, three months ago. And so there's certainly the federal program where all households can sign up to receive four test kits. That was made available a few weeks ago, and you can now sign up again for another round of test kits. But again, our focus has probably have probably been more on the CBOs, and again, those communities that we know have less access to that specific resources. With regards to testing to return to work, that's not a requirement that we've necessarily asked businesses to impose. You know, generally, if we are asked for support or assistance from businesses, we're looking at the CDC guidance. And as far as what does the CDC recommend if we're thinking about a return to work? And in some instances, it may not necessarily be testing. We also know that many businesses may choose to continue to still have residents masked or individuals that work there masked as well as an additional precaution. But again, we've largely focused on those CBOs.
Okay. And so there's no connection, well, there's not a formalized connection between CBOs and like, small businesses. So like, can small businesses reach out to the CBOs to get tests delivered to their businesses? That's what I'm more hearing.
Yeah, I mean, so in this next round, as we're distributing more test kits, as I mentioned, the first round, it was a very limited supply, and so it was meant, you know, to really go to those residents that had no access. In this next round, those CBOs will get a lot more, about 1,000 test kits, and are able to redistribute up to 50% of those to partners that they identify.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter. Councilman Schleifer?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Health Commissioner. I had a question about the contact tracers. So obviously, you have a bunch of contact tracers, and I know through the federal funding, we're talking about significantly more spending on contact tracers. Now that contact tracing is a thing of the past, where are those bodies and resources going to be reallocated to?
Yeah, so I wouldn't say it's a thing of the past. I would say that our focus around contact tracing has shifted, right? So where we were previously contacting every single case or attempting to contact every single case that came in, we're very focused on higher vulnerability populations, and we still look at outbreaks. So for instance, we would still be contact tracing alongside city schools if there is outbreak or cases identified there. We would still be contact tracing in our congregate settings such as our shelters. We would still be supporting any contact tracing, potentially an outbreak investigation in nursing facilities. So we will be decreasing and de-escalating the number of staff in a stepwise approach, and so that number will be coming down. But I think that the need still exists, it's just a lot more focused on high-risk settings, if that makes sense.
So how many, how many people is that right now?
So I'm going to look to Dr. Greenbaum, who may have a better handle on the exact number.
I don't have the exact number, but also just wanted to emphasize that the first part of contact tracing is case investigation. So that's how we know how many people have COVID, who those people are, what the risk factors are, how many people have comorbidities, who should be prioritized to test to treat. So contact tracers do that case investigation. So we call them contact tracers, but they're also doing that, that initial work to find out who is getting COVID, where do they live, what parts of the city, where do we need to concentrate our efforts? So that piece is still remaining and is still, you know, even though the contact tracing piece of it is pivoting, the case investigation of identifying cases and making sure we know for our situational awareness and for our response who they are, that is still occurring. So the staff, as Dr. Jaraza mentioned, will be reducing in size, but the work that they're doing includes that case investigation piece.
So are we talking like 20 people, 200 people, 2,000 people? What's the ballpark? I don't need an exact number.
Not 200, not 200, much less than that, but I think we can get back to you. Yeah, I think we can get back to you.
Like a few dozen people?
I'm sorry?
It's like a few dozen people, like 20, 30, 40, something like that? Or is it in the hundreds?
I would say that's the ballpark, and we can get back to you with the, with more accurate numbers.
Gotcha. Okay, because the money that was allocated to that even recently was for like hundreds of people. It was like in the tens of millions, it was like over $10 million, I believe, from that, from that, the most recent announcement. So I understand you're going to keep some people going, but is there going to be a reallocation of those positions to something else such as, you know, vaccine outreach or something that we're pushing more aggressively than the functions that Dr. Greenbaum?
Yeah, so like I said, we can get back to you on specific numbers. What we have done throughout, as we see cases decrease and increase, we have flexed some of that staff to support other parts of the response anyway, right? To support that vaccination outreach and canvassing, to support work being done by our call center, which connects individuals to resources throughout the city. But we, you know, we will get back to you with specifics on how that allocation is supporting future contact investigation and contact tracing.
Okay, thank you. And can I ask one more question? Madam Chair?
You're good.
So my other question is, how many vacancies are there in the Health Department now?
Oh, that's a great question as well. So I would again, want to be very specific so I can get back to you. Now, and when you say vacancies, are you seeking a specific type of vacancy?
Just across the board, it's something that, you know, I want to start asking across when we get into like budget hearings, just to understand. I know there's high vacancies everywhere across the country, but just understanding the vacancy levels by agency, you know, what jobs are, like, how many of those jobs are posted versus not posted? So just getting a better understanding of that.
Okay, yeah, no, we're happy to get back to you with that information. I think the one thing I would, I would note, at least with the Health Department, is so much of our budget is funded by grants, so that we do have positions that we have to sometimes fill very quickly or positions that sit for a while but then go away because that grant funding has ended. But we're happy to be more specific.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to move to Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner, my question is related to the vaccination rate for children under five. What are we going to do in terms of outreach and education as we wrap it up and also make parents feel more comfortable because we already know that the series of vaccinations that the children are going to go through? So how do we communicate that on top of those series of vaccinations as well?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think, you know, a few things. One, we started really focused on how to speak with parents and parents of young people back in May when vaccination was approved for our 12 to 17-year-olds, and then we had our 5 to 11-year-olds. And I will say, each approach is slightly different, right? So we knew our 12 to 17-year-olds, many of them listened to their peers, so we have youth ambassadors to support this age group. Our 5 to 11-year-olds or our school-aged children, they're in school. And so city schools, I think, has been a great partner in helping us identify locations to put vaccination clinics and serving as, we have teacher ambassadors that help support that population. But that zero to four population is unique in that, and I know you have a little one, you're seeing the pediatrician all the time, right, when they're that little. And so we are also and have been working with supporting our pediatric partners so that they feel comfortable providing that education because those are, those are the kids that are in, more likely to be in childcare, but not necessarily going to school. And so really using that avenue of the local pediatrician or family provider to stress the importance of getting this group vaccinated and continuing to work with parents. We also have our Beamer for Healthy Babies Network, which supports pregnant, pregnant people. And so again, that's a network that we can leverage to educate parents and caregivers for children in that zero to four age range.
Are we going to try to reach out to the Maryland State Department of Education to support those childcare providers? Because a lot of their certifications go through them. So I'm just putting it out there as a suggestion.
Yeah, that work is already being done. So we work in conjunction with the Maryland Department of Health and MSDE, so that's who has helped set guidelines for those institutions. But absolutely, we work with childcare providers as well for that zero to four group.
Perfect. And then my next question is, more broadly, as federal funding is deciding for testing and vaccinations, how has that impacted your operations but also impacted our health partners and hospitals?
I'm sorry, can you say the very first part of what you?
So since federal funding has dwindled down for COVID-19, how has that impacted your operations but also impacted operations for our health partners at the hospitals as well? I just want to know more broadly.
Sure, sure. I can speak more to the Health Department, not so much the hospitals. I will say, you know, fortunately, we have the ARPA funding, which will help us continue much of the work I talked about today after July 1. And so right now, we do have FEMA reimbursement for a number of our activities through June 30th. And then again, beginning July 1, some of those ongoing activities will be supported by the ARPA funding. I think what's, what is challenging is we know that that also goes away under December 2024, and so I think that will help us for the next few years. But I'm very worried about what happens after that 2024 cliff, where much of what's helped us build this infrastructure and importantly, I think, build this public health workforce. When we think about, when I talk about our value ambassadors, those are community health workers at their core that we will lose funding to support much of that work.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Conway?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Commissioner, for all your great work. It's really great to know that we have such a great leader like you leading us through this pandemic. I have one major question, and that's with regard to city employees. Do you know the current vaccination rate for city employees? And then on top of that, are we seeing that trend decline, given we see a relatively low positivity rate? And can we be doing more to prepare for that next spike? Would not know what that will look like.
I think roughly, it's about 80%. DHR actually is kind of the keeper of records with regards to employee vaccination status, but I think it's right around 80%, so comparable with where the city is. As far as what we should be doing, we should, we should continue to vaccinate, right? And so I think this is where the importance of getting your full vaccination series, getting your third booster, and now your fourth booster if you're over 50 or immunocompromised becomes really critical. Vaccination remains, you know, crucial as we think about how we transition. You know, we see that the virus is certainly becoming or transitioning to being more endemic. We speed that along by getting more people vaccinated. And so, you know, we continue to run Health Department clinics. We continue to be open to city employees who would like to get vaccinated. And then, like I said, are running multiple clinics across the city for community members as well.
Thank you. I'm really curious if we're seeing any difference across agencies in vaccinations, knowing that we have this relative lull in positivity and hospitalizations and the like, and not knowing what to expect in the future. I'm, you know, I'm really curious what more we can be doing. I know we got hit pretty hard in December and January, and it really began to affect operations in DPW and the Fire Department and in the Police Department. And so I know 80% is really good. I would love that to be triple digits. I don't know if that's, it's probably not possible, but anything we can do to make sure that we have our employees vaxxed, boosted, double-boosted if possible and necessary. So just.
No, I think that makes total sense. And so, you know, we have worked very closely with the Restoration Services Oversight Committee. Dr. McDowell, the Chief Medical Officer for the Health Department, sits on that committee, and they have really helped to shape and inform how we go about vaccinating employees. And so an example of one of the things that I know that that team did was create the Team Up Liaison, and those individuals have been trained as vaccine ambassadors. And so our value ambassadors, those community health workers that are supporting city residents and have the information and can do the messaging and outreach, the Team Up employees that are, that are city folks have been trained with the same material so that they can be that internal vaccine ambassador for their agency.
Appreciate it. Thank you, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We're going to be going back to Councilwoman Porter.
I did have a question. Have we been noticing an uptick in the school systems, like, in schools? So have we been noticing a uptick in school systems for, as far as the virus?
So as we see the slight increase that I mentioned here, there is also a slight increase in city schools. It's still very small, similar to what we're seeing here, where we're averaging about 43 new cases per day. But there has been a slight bump across, across city schools as there has been really in all populations.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I just have a few more questions, and it's really around long COVID. Conversations have increased within my community, I'm pretty sure all about communities about long COVID. And this first one is, this is actually from one of my constituents in Frankfurt. So who is most at risk for long COVID, and do we know how many people get it?
Yeah, so I don't know that we know the exact science about who is most at risk. I believe estimates say up to 30 to 40% of people can experience long COVID, and that is a conglomerate of symptoms, really, you know, happening eight or so weeks after that initial COVID infection. I appreciate your constituent bringing that up. One of the things that we're working to do is town halls at the Health Department. In the next few weeks, we will have a town hall focused on long COVID, so we'll definitely share that with this group because there are some specialists and some clinical leaders who are doing work on long COVID specifically here in Baltimore that we want to talk about their work and what they're seeing.
Do we, do we know if any of the impairments, the long-term impairments from COVID-19 can be treated or prevented?
So I think it depends on what that impairment is, but again, I think we're still learning. It's, we're only two years in, right? And so I think so many, so many things we're still going to be learning probably for, you know, years to come.
What, what can we do for community members to assist them if they're having long COVID? Or who should they be asking questions to outside of?
or who should they be asking questions to outside of their primary care?
So I'm going to say, start with your primary care physician, right? Because that is the person who's probably most familiar with your medical history and can make any appropriate referrals to specialists or subspecialists, depending on what your specific symptoms are. I think what, again, what we want to do is, is put more information out there on long COVID, and so we'll be doing our town hall in a few weeks, which will, which will feature folks who are specifically working with patients that have long COVID.
Thank you, Dr. Giraza. Did we have any additional questions from the committee? Okay, we're going to check to see if we have any public testimony. No one has signed up for public testimony today, so I am going to thank everyone for joining us. The committee's likely going to hold an additional meeting in a coming month just to keep the community informed about the city's continued vaccination efforts and progress. And this hearing is now in recess. Everyone, thanks for joining us today.